Coming up, a conversation with Dr. Gordon Klingenschmidt, candidate for an at-large seat on Colorado Springs City Council.
This is 6035 Media.
Casting and informed vote is your right and your duty as a citizen. I'm Brian Grossman, Executive Editor of 6035.
And I'm Shelley Roers, spokesperson for the League of Women Voters at the Pike's Peak Region.
We're teaming up to bring you a conversation with the candidates in the April 2023 Colorado Springs City election. So this interview is both an episode of the new 6035 Vote Podcast.
And the League's Making Democracy Work Podcast. So let's get to it. We're first going to open up with an opening remarks from Gordon. Why don't you go ahead and get us started?
Well, thank you, Shelley, and thank you, Brian. I'm honored to appear on your program and speak directly to the voters. My name is Gordon Klingenschmidt. My website is gordonforcolorado.com. And I'm running for city council on a pledge to love your neighbor. This is the Love Your Neighbor campaign from Dr. Chaps, as some people call me. I am a former Navy Chaplain. I'm a former state representative. I am, I lead a charity. I, our charity cares for the poor. We routinely, for example, we give away free coats to homeless veterans here in Colorado Springs. We feed orphans and children overseas. And I have a legacy of service as a 20-year veteran of our community. I'm running, I think there's too much division in our politics these days. I think there's, you know, too much extremism. And I think we really ought to come together as a community, especially in a nonpartisan election like this, when none of us are running as Republicans or Democrats. This is our city. This is the city of Colorado Springs. I've lived here since 1986, except for military assignments, all of my adult life in Colorado Springs. And I'm running on a pledge, really, there's three elements to my campaign. We can talk about that in a minute. But back to the Love Your Neighbor pledge, my pledge, if elected, is that I will represent and vote the way that you would if you were in my shoes, the way that I believe you would want me to vote. And that's my pledge to care for you, the voting public, and to members of the public. I will be accessible and I will be your representative if I am elected to city council.
Okay, let's get into some specific questions. The first one has to do with development and water. The 128% water rule was decided by city council yesterday regarding flagpole annexations. How do you feel about flagpole annexations and just annexations in general? And how we source them with the water that they need?
Sure, well, I'm a big believer in personal property rights. And, you know, there is, obviously, there's a housing shortage. There is a lack of affordable housing in Colorado. When I was a state representative, I reached across the aisle and I worked with people on both sides of the issue to try to make sure that not only is our water rights secure for the future, but that people's housing should have access to natural resources and utilities. Obviously, you know, with the decline in water supply from the Colorado River, with the declining supplies that are needed by other states, including, you know, Lake Mead in California and Arizona. They, Colorado is unique in that we are the one state in the continental U.S. where all of the water flows out of our state. We don't depend on water. We are the source of water for every state in the West. And so water rights in our state constitution are a property right. And it's not government-controlled. It is bought and sold by private water right owners on the free market. That's the way our state constitution demands. And so our city is able to buy and sell those water rights. And we thankfully retain enough water as from the southern supply system to continue to care for the people of Colorado Springs. The bigger question is, is there enough water for new territory? When the city chooses to annex surrounding territories in the county, is there enough water to grow the economy? Well, to have an affordable housing market, you're going to have to have new development. You're going to have to build new houses. Otherwise, as my friend Bill Murray on the council just told me yesterday, you're going to be stuck with a lot of new apartments inside of the city. But the real answer for affordable housing is for people to own their own property. And with the inflation, I'm concerned, you know, everyone's noticing the price of eggs is double. The price of gasoline is double. When the price of water goes up proportionally, the city taxpayers are on the hook to provide that water or to procure that water and those water rights from counties in the South. And I think there are more affordable ways to do that. I am generally in favor of development. I think our city should grow. I think our, the home builders provide affordable housing to people who need it. And if we don't have that, then people can't pay their utility bills. People can't pay their energy bills. We can talk about the, the need for clean natural gas. Everyone ought to be able to afford to live here, and I'm concerned about that.
Okay, Shelley?
Yes, sir. So kind of an offshoot of that same water question. A lot of money or a lot of water is specifically designed for landscaping. We know that. We've seen the CSU Utilities information, right? There's a lot of waste, what we would consider waste, towards landscaping. And so number one is, how do you deal with the waste specifically? And I'm going to go with businesses because individual land homeowners and their Kentucky bluegrass is really not what we're talking about, I think, with regards to the waste for me. If I think about it, it's the country clubs and your golf courses and your resorts that have massive amounts of water usage with regards to the landscape. So I would like to see what, how you would address waste with our water. And then should the city consider extending water and other utilities to subdivisions located outside the city that might never even be annexed as part of a regional water, as part of being a regional water provider, which is what CSU Utilities, I think, ultimate goal is. So kind of a two-pronged question there, sir.
Well, thank you. As you know, the city council oversees Colorado Springs Utilities. And I think we have one member of the council that will be permanently on that board and meets, you know, every other Wednesday, I think, with the Utilities Board. They have important decisions to make and they have important services that they provide. I'm so thankful that we have professionals in Colorado Springs Utilities who are, you know, helping us to reallocate and double source and resource existing wastewater and make sure that that is cleaned and put back in the system. We also want to be respectful of our downstream neighbors, right? We don't want to put excessive pollution into the water that goes down to Pueblo. Eventually, that's pumped back uphill to us. So we want to make sure we have clean use of water supply. But as I said, water itself is a private property right. And if people buy and sell water rights and our city buys that, then it's really up to the landowners to have respectful use of their water. I know, for example, I'm a homeowner here since 1996. We water our grass, but we try to do it once a week instead of every day. We don't want to be wasteful. I think that's an individual decision for people who own the properties, for, you know, people who choose to participate in our beautiful parks, our beautiful golf courses. People want to be outdoors. I'm not against landscaping. I think our, the beautification of our natural land is sort of an artistic expression of people who want to provide a beautiful community for our, our citizens to go visit, to participate in. You know, there is an opportunity, I think, for conversations with the county. The second part of your question, Shelley. The county has different water sources perhaps than the city. And the question is, what are the taxpayers willing to pay for? The city taxes go to pay for city water and should not necessarily be given away to people who didn't pay those taxes. The, the people in the county who, whether the, the landowners or the developers out there are building new developments that are not yet part of the city, they have to apply for annexation. And the city can, the city does have the overriding right to try to annex some of those neighborhoods. But there are also people in the county that are not receiving city services that are underserved. For example, in Cimarron Hills, where I was state representative for House District 15, they are not part of the city. They were not annexed, but there are, you know, acres and acres of, you know, single-family homes. And they have to come up with their own water supply. And they're not part of the system because they have the side benefit of not having to pay city taxes for that water right. So, you know, these are conversations that have to be held. I think there are regional solutions. I was at the city council meeting yesterday, and I think city council, we're all unanimously in agreement that there need to be regional conversations before these decisions are made. And the city councilors have, you know, difficult votes on these issues.
I have a personal property right question. Where do you stand on accessory dwelling units being allowed in single-family residential areas?
Sure. I, I think I'm sort of a limited government kind of a guy, and I'm for personal property rights. I lean libertarian in my views. I think we should have less government and not more. When people want to, you know, build, say, a mother-in-law suite in their backyard or enhance their existing property, maybe do, add an extension so that they can bring in a family member or rent. I think that's really a personal choice. I think when people own the land, they own the deed to their own property, they really ought to be able to, to, you know, control their own parking spaces, you know, work with planners. And as long as there are zoning permissions, you know, our city is zoned and properly planned. There's a, there's a 10-year plan. There, there should be a 50-year plan for strategic planning about what parts of the city are going to be looked for, you know, as, as far as commercial spaces or residential spaces. These are things that the city, I think, what, 80% of the votes we will be taking on city council are about land use or zoning questions. I can't pledge support in advance for any particular proposal that would come before me, but I'll tell you, in, in general, I believe in property rights. I believe the, the citizens who pay money for the deed to the dirt on which they are going to grow, whether it's a residential family or, or business development. These are things that I will carefully consider and probably lean in favor of their, their own citizens' right to not be overregulated.
Over to Shelley.
Thanks, Brian. So how do you propose to address the city's affordable housing crisis, sir?
Well, thank you for that question. When I was a state representative in the legislature, I reached across the aisle and I worked with Democrats and Republicans alike to propose affordable housing solutions. And if you look at the cost of, you know, whether it's new home construction or apartment space or condominiums, I think there's a dearth of condominium spaces available. People cannot buy their own condos. And part of that is the litigation costs that go to the builder who tries to build those one-unit condominiums. For example, there are construction defects, litigation. And, and, you know, some of these trial lawyers, they, they come in and they'll buy a single unit inside of, you know, a 13-story development. And then they'll start picking at the walls and they'll find, oh, there aren't enough nails in the two-by-fours. So we're going to file a lawsuit against the guy who built the place. And that doubles the litigation cost to the, to the builder. And it drives everybody's prices up because now nobody can afford the building that was supposed to be intended for the poor. And we need to have, you know, control our litigation costs, reduce the construction defects, frivolous lawsuits. And there are taxation questions as well, right? I, I'm concerned that our city, Colorado Springs, has the highest sales tax of anyone else in our region. Did you know, when you buy a hamburger, you're going to pay 8.25% sales tax in the city of Colorado Springs? That's higher than Denver. That's higher than Pueblo. That's higher than Castle Rock. They only pay like seven and a half percent. So why are our sales taxes here higher? This is conservative Colorado Springs, or at least we're supposed to be fiscally responsible. And at the same time, you know, when everyone's paying double for the price of eggs, double for the price of gasoline, we cannot afford a caveat government. There need to be a better reign on our expenditures. And I think overtaxation is a problem. When you see these ballot initiatives that come out, and there might be one coming on April 4th, when our election is, without raising taxes, can we keep the taxes that we've already overcharged you? And my answer to that generally is no. I'm a defender of Taber, the Taxpayer's Bill of Rights. I think there are refunds coming to people. If we don't just vote those away and continue to vote to raise taxes, I think we'll have more affordable living, not just housing, but more affordable for the poor in our city to be able to live here and to be able to, to pay their grocery bills.
My question is public safety related. The city's police department is short about 70 officers from its authorized strength. What, what would you do about addressing public safety in, in the police department and shortage of officers?
Well, thank you. First of all, I'll say I'm a 20-year veteran of our military. And I've worn the uniform for federal service, not city service. But I am a strong supporter of our first responders, of our men and women in uniform, not just the police force, but, but also obviously the, the county sheriff's department, but also our prosecutors. You know, I just received a briefing from Michael Allen, our district attorney, about crime enforcement. But also our fire responders, other men and women in uniform, our medical first responders. I think there are essential services that need to be funded. Just the same way that the federal budget would go to support the Pentagon or the military. I think a portion of our city budget, a fair portion, needs to go to supporting our police so that we can have safe living spaces. This boils down to 911 response times, you know, when somebody calls for help, what's the, what's the fastest that somebody can respond to that? If our city police force is, is short-staffed, the, the bigger question is, what's, what's the right size for the police force? It's not, you know, sometimes these, these organizational charts and, I was an Air Force Academy graduate, Air Force Strategic Planner. I've looked at and I've worked with personnel charts, you know, and you see sometimes there's overpayment in the top end of the salary scheme, but underpayment in, down at the sergeant level, down at the airman level, to use an Air Force term. You know, I think we could have flatter organizations. I was just talking with our newly-elected sheriff, who said, instead of having three commanders and, you know, a, a limited number of working patrolmen, he's only going to have one commander. And by, by just reducing those two positions, he was able to hire eight new members of the, of the police force for the sheriff's office. We can look at strategies like that to have a more efficient expenditure. I'm a low-tax guy, but at the same time, to increase the efficiency. In the Air Force, we refer this to, this is the tooth-to-tail ratio. You know, sometimes there's, the bureaucracy is too big and the weapon systems are not big enough. So we need more teeth and less tail. And I think there are efficiencies that can be realized as I'm part of the strategic planning process.
Thank you. Shelley?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you for your service, sir. I also, four out of my brothers and sisters, as well as my dad, have served in the military. So sometimes the military is not always as efficient as we like it to be. But this does kind of take us to our next question because a lot of the homeless people that we do have in our community are homeless veterans. They are, whether it's PTSD or whether they've lost their home, their family, whatever the case may be. And it's not just veterans that are that way either. And there's a whole dichotomy for that homeless population. But specifically, I'd like to know, how do you, how would you address the homeless issue that we have currently and, and in our community? And I know it's all over the country, but specifically, what can we do here?
Well, thank you, Shelley, for the question. First thing we can do is show compassion. As, as not just a charity leader myself, but I've been to the Marion Soup Kitchen. I've been to the Colorado Springs Rescue Mission. I've worked alongside of leaders there. And our charity has personally spent the money to give free coats to homeless veterans in Colorado Springs. I've walked down by the riverside where some of the encampments have been bulldozed. We care about the poor, and that is not to say that we should have lawlessness in our city. But there's a balance. And I think Colorado Springs is fortunate to have a great support staff among our charities who already care for the poor. Specifically, I think state law allows for the police to, you know, clean up the sidewalks from clutter or needles or who knows what, what dangerous things could be left around, on the condition that there are enough beds in local charities to care for the poor. Colorado Springs is great where, you know, two to one, the number of beds required versus the number that are needed. And that allows the police then to go into the camps and to, you know, sometimes remove dangerous debris and, and drive the, the people who are facing and experiencing homelessness back to the helpers. I think when the, when you see competing cities like Denver, right? Denver does not have enough homeless beds. They don't have enough charity workshops. They don't have the same resources. So they're, by law, their, their policemen's hands are tied. They're not able to go, and I was at the state Capitol where I served, and there are tent cities building up outside of, right there on Colfax, outside of our state Capitol. Beautiful gold dome, all the legislators inside with their, you know, three-piece suits. And outside are the poor. And they are not having the resources they need. And therefore, the police are not actually allowed to move camps off of the sidewalks. And you see people, it's like a third world country sometimes. Colorado Springs is never going to be that because we care for the poor enough to make sure they get the resources. And sometimes they're veterans, sometimes they're struggling with post-traumatic stress disorder. They're struggling with mental illness, struggling with drug addiction. Part of our, the problem nationally is the easy access to inexpensive addictive drugs. And that hurts our job market, that, that pulls otherwise capable people out of their jobs and into homelessness for the first time. Because the addictive nature of some of these substances that cause the mental illness, that cause the dependency, they rob people of their independence. And I want to help, as a former Navy Chaplain, I would counsel people. I would pray with people to get free of their addictions. Our city services and, and the, the private charities that are already doing that are wonderful. They have the best addiction recovery resources. They have the best possible sources and resources to get people out of those difficult situations and put them back to independence.
It's back to me, but we are in the last third here. And Shelley, I'm going to defer to you. Go ahead and ask the last question before we have Gordon finish up.
Oof, I need to get two in. Is that all right, Brian? Because I've got.
Yeah, yeah, go. Yeah, you do both.
All right.
I'll sit here quietly.
I'm a good multitasker. You can combine the questions.
So these are two league issues, and we don't ask you the basic questions, sir. Vote411 is our portal for the National League of Women Voters and our local league. So you're going to get a survey thing, a survey response for you to fill out about, you know, your basics, your platform, or what are your top three priorities? And what is your experience? All that kind of basic stuff, which everybody answers anyway. But these last two questions are league-specific for, for me and my, and our, and our group itself. One, city council pay basically puts out a lot of people that can't afford to run for city council. So my, my question there is, do you, do you support an increase in city council pay? Number one. And then our Harvard Law Election Clinic lawsuit that the, the league is a part of, specifically designed and written and filed to move spring elections to the fall. And it doesn't necessarily mean during fall of an even year. It could be fall in this, in an odd-numbered year when you have school board elections. So my question is, do you support that move to moving elections from spring to fall? And then also, do you support an increase in city council pay? Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. I see how skillfully you combined those two questions. Let me answer them in turn. Part A, you asked about a raise for city councilors. I, I think honestly, the, the pay that they're offering me for this job is thankless. It's, what is it, like $6,500?
I think that's too high.
Per year.
$6,350, I think.
Oh, my gosh. That's for an entire 12 months. I'm not going to be able to please my wife with that income. But, but I'm not doing this for the money, obviously. When I was an elected legislator, I was one of the few to vote no to raise the salary of state representatives. I wrote it against my own pay raise when I was already serving as a legislator. I think fiscal responsibility requires that we don't overpay. Obviously, I'm running on a low taxation, fighting inflation, caring for the taxpayer, the Taxpayer Bill of Rights, for example. And, and I think there are people who are willing to volunteer. There's obviously between seven and eight people on the ballot. By the way, everyone can vote for three members of the city council at-large race. I would not support a pay raise for members of the city council. And if anything, this could be a volunteer position. I'd be willing to donate back my $6,350 per year, as I already have given to my own charity and we give to orphans. We care for widows. We care for the homeless. There are things that the city can better do with that money, obviously, support our first responders. Also, build the roads and grow the infrastructure. Support our, you know, Public Works Department and people who are out there building the parks and caring for that. There are so many other priorities. The last thing we need is for bureaucrats like myself to get more money. The second part of your question, I think there are efficiencies to be gained, maybe, by combining elections into the fall. Obviously, as a fiscal response, conservative, I would maybe look into that. I don't know what the arguments are for keeping them in the spring election, except that Colorado Springs is special. It's not the county. It's not the federal or the state elections. And it is useful, I think, to have a, a different cycle, a different conversation that we're having right now. You know, I'll be putting out my yard signs. People probably think, oh, it's way too early. But no, the election is April 4th. Everyone ought to be aware that city council races are a spring, odd-year election. And you'll have, you know, one vote for mayor and three votes for city council at large. If there's seven or eight candidates, the top three can win. Last time I ran for this, I came in fourth. I was the top vote getter to not win a seat on the city council. And I was within 1% of being seated. So I'm confident this time that if the voters have confidence in me again, that I may even be elected to the city council. And again, my pledge is to love my neighbor. And that is to vote the way that I think you would want me to vote. If you were elected to city council, how would you vote? I'm going to vote that same way.
Okay, Gordon, we're going to give you two minutes to go ahead and wrap up and let everybody know why they should vote for you.
Well, thank you, Brian, and thank you, Shelley, for this conversation. I think experience matters. And there are some names on the ballot that you've never heard of, and they don't have the experience. For example, I'm already a former legislator. Yeah, I already have, I was twice rated the most conservative legislator in our county according to the Principles of Liberty Nonpartisan Scorecard. They rate the bills and I voted for smaller government and more liberty. Other people don't, maybe they don't have the same experience in the education space. But I am a former college faculty member. I've earned my PhD. Other people don't have the same experience in the business space. But I've earned my MBA and I've founded two successful businesses. Other people may or may not have served their country, and there's nothing wrong with that, right? Everyone's got a job that's important to them. I happen to be a 20-year veteran of the Air Force and Navy. I was a Navy Chaplain. Other people don't have the same experience in charity leadership. But since 1999, I've led a nonprofit charity here in Colorado Springs, and we have served the poor. We do feed almost 1,000 orphans and children overseas. This morning, I was dealing with one of our widows that we care for to try and help her get her washing machine repaired. You know, we, there's an element of compassion, and I'm running as a compassionate conservative. The New York Times has recently labeled me as a pro-life activist. But I've also stood up for religious freedom. I, I led one of the protests, for example, successfully, by the way, outside of the Air Force Academy to make sure that religious freedom is respected among cadets. And I'm a graduate of that finance institution. and I'm a graduate of that finance institution. Um, our organization has spent, uh, sent five million petitions to Congress over the years. I have experience in leading freedom and liberty-type campaigns. We've helped change bad laws or policies in 13 states and four times in federal law. And I will stand up for you. When big government is coming against you and restricting your constitutional rights, I will defend uh your constitutional rights. I I will defend the little guy against the big government that tries to come in and take you away. Um, again, my website is GordonForColorado.com. That is Gordon F O R Colorado dot com. My name is Gordon Klingenschmidt, and I'd be honored to earn your support for city council of Colorado Springs.
All right. Well, thank you, Gordon. Uh, you've been watching or listening to a joint podcast effort by 6035 Media and the League of Women Voters of the Pike's Peak Region.
Be sure to follow Making Democracy Work and check out L W B P P R dot org for more information regarding our candidate forums in March.
Or 6035 Vote to make sure your vote on April 4th is an informed one. This podcast is produced by Dave Gardner. Video was directed by Nick Raven. I'm Brian Grossman, executive editor.
And I'm Shelley Roers with Pike's Peak Region League of Women Voters. See you next time.
Hi, I'm Dave Gardner.
And I'm Nick Raven.
We're the podcast producers here at 6035 Media.
6035 Vote is just one of a growing family of hyper-local podcasts that we're creating.
And these are for you, someone who wants to engage fully in your community.
We've got the 6035, which is a quick, lively recap of the top news stories of the week.
It's my favorite. It's really great and often funny.
I love having you as a guest, actually.
I do, too.
And then we have Hot Takes and Streaming Breaks, which is a potpourri of news and commentary about movies, gaming, TV streaming, and just so much more. It's for youthful heart, and, you know, that could be anyone, really.
Yeah, I'm surprised I even really enjoy it because Nick hosts that, and uh he's he's witty.
Well, and the cool thing is that you can watch both of these podcasts on YouTube.
Or you can listen to them on the go in your favorite podcast app.
And there's a couple more, uh, but you can also visit sixtythrefimeedia.org/podcast to see them, browse them, sample them.
And then subscribe to the ones that you like.
And then subscribe to this YouTube channel.
Yeah. And if you really love it all, like we do, uh, you can just, you can just subscribe to the 6035 Podcast Network podcast, which is a conglomeration of all the episodes, all the brilliance and humor that emanates from the studio.
Absolutely. And there's a lot of it. So like and subscribe today and go listen to them all or watch them.
What he said. Good, thanks.
Got it?
That wasn't so painful.